We got five thirty. We're gonna stand for the. Jenny David.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Mark Serbrot.
Present.
Brad Newbecker.
Ronald Vaughn.
Present.
Um, item two, any additions or corrections to the agenda? I wanted to add, uh, we're gonna add a closed session, so we're gonna make that item fifteen and move adjournment to sixteen. Any other additions or corrections?
No.
Make a motion to accept the agenda with the change.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrot to approve agenda with these stated changes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, review of minutes, March tenth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting minutes.
I have reviewed the minutes of the March tenth meeting and like a motion to accept them as presented to board.
A motion from Commissioners Scott with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the March tenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries March eleventh, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, special committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I've read the minutes on that and make a motion that we accept them as presented for.
Motion from Commissioners Vaughn with support from Commissioner Serbrot to approve the March eleventh, twenty twenty-two, special committee of the whole meeting minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries three C, March seventeenth, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
My turn. I have to read them over and make a motion to accept it.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrot with support from Commissioner Scott to approve the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, committee of the whole meeting minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item four, public comment on the agenda items only. This is public comment for agenda items only. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Is there any public comment in the room? A public comment on the, in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item six, action on consent calendar. I think we can go ahead and combine some of these. You guys.
Want to recognize correspondence first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Correspondence is from Iron County related to state government onsite services. Those have been received and filed. That's a second correspondent we receive related to that. Item six, action on consent calendar. Have you guys, you guys have a, uh, opinion on that? We have, uh, resolutions seven A through, uh. Oh, really? I like to exclude claims.
Okay. Oh, it's blue claim.
So item seven, eight through N.
Stuff for.
It's okay with me.
For clarification, you do have to pull, uh, seven B so you can remove it from the table first.
Oh.
Seven B?
Right.
Okay.
Why are we pulling that?
Cause we, we tabled it.
Oh.
Mr. Vitor.
It has to be brought back, uh, open, uh, put back on the table.
Right.
Or take, take it off the table.
So let's just pull seventy for sure.
Okay.
Anything else?
Let's see, the, the. I'll make a motion to consent calendar A through N with the exception of B.
Word.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Vaughn. I'm gonna kind of briefly, just so everybody knows what they are. Um, item seven A is a resolution to authorize purchase of building department vehicles. This resolution is sponsored by the Building Inspector, section twelve of the Single State Construction Kodak, fourth rules for inspection by the enforcing agency of any construction being performed for purposes of ensuring compliance with the building permit. The code and other applicable laws and regulations, because jurisdictional land area of Ogumah County consists of five hundred and seventy-five square miles. It is necessary for county building inspectors to have access to county-owned vehicles in order to fulfill their representative respective obligations under the act. Vehicles currently used by the county building inspectors have reached end of life and should be replaced. The building inspector secured quotes through. My deal for purchases of two new vehicles that meets the needs of the department at a total cost of sixty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Approval of this proposed resolution will allow the purchase. Item seven C, to approve confidential information policy. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator. Ogumah County collects and maintains confidential information as a manner of routine business. It is important that county employees understand their responsibilities to protect and safeguard the confidential information to which they have access as a result of their employment. A formal confidential information policy will establish rules meant to respect and maintain the security and privacy of confidential information. If approved, the policy will be immediate, will have immediate effect. Item seventy is resolution to approve annexed building use policy. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator. Ogumah County maintains the Ogumah County Annex Building for Use of Offices that provide public services. Non-county individuals and groups are occasionally wished to utilize meeting facilities located in the annexed building. The proposed policy will permit use of the annexed building for purposes other than financial gain for a non-refundable fee of fifty dollars. If approved, the policy will have immediate effect. Item seventy, resolution to approve business travel and reimbursement policy. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator. On March twenty-fourth, two thousand, the Ogumah County Board of Commissioners adopted. A travel and capital expenditure expenditures policy. The policy has not been modified since its original adoption. In May of its provisions are outdated, such as the IRS mileage reimbursement rate. If approved, the new policy will provide a more contemporary approach to address business travel and eligible reimbursements. If approved, the policy will have immediate effect. Item seven F, resolution to authorize surplus property online auction services. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator on October twenty-two. On October twenty-second, twenty twenty, the Ogumah County Board of Commissioners adopted resolution twenty dash fifty-one to adopt a disposable disposal of surplus property policy. Except for sales to other units of government or to nonprofit corporations, the county strives to maximize net proceeds from the sales of surplus property. The public group auction service was designed specifically to enable public agencies to manage their entire surplus inventory through online auctions. While at the same time maintaining compliance with state regulations and policies. Administrative costs for auction services are assessed to the buyer of surplus property as part of the sale. The proposed resolution authorizes use of services provided by the public group for disposal of surplus county property. Item seven G, resolution to accept a grant from the U.S. Department Sheriff's Association. This resolution is sponsored by the sheriff. The United States Deputy Sheriff Association is a five oh one-three nonprofit organization dedicated to the support of law enforcement, their families, and their community through equipment donations, a highly acclaimed national training program. End of watch donations, scholarships, cash grants, and citizen awareness programs. The U.S. DSA recently awarded a five thousand dollar grant to the Ogumah County Sheriff's Office towards the purchase of equipment needed to support law enforcement activities. The proposed resolution offers formal acceptance of the grant and states the county's appreciation for the award. Item seven H, resolution to appoint a member to the Economic Development Corporation. Section four of the Economic Development Corporation's Act states that the Board of Directors of the EDC shall consist of not less than nine persons appointed for terms of six years. The Act requires a chairperson of the County Board of Commissioners with the advice, advice and consent of the County Board of Commissioners to appoint members to the, of the EDC Board of Directors. The term of the EDC member, Joe Pereira, has expired and has confirmed his desire for reappointment. If approved, Mr. Pereira will serve as a six-year term ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Item seven I, resolution to appoint a member to the Sabo Valley Mental Health Authority Board. The Sabo Valley Community Mental Health Authority is a community mental health authority of Ogumah County organized under the terms of section two oh four of the Michigan Mental Health Code. Upon establishment of a community mental health services program, the members' counties establish a twelve-member community. Mental Health Services Board with directors appointed by their member counties. The term Sabo Valley Community Mental Health Board, Al Evans, will expire on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And he has confirmed his desire for reappointment. If approved, Mr. Evans will serve a three-year term ending in March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Item seven G, resolution to approve a data sharing agreement for jail incarceration data. This resolution is sponsored by the sheriff. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services seeks certain data as maintained by the Ogumah County Corrections Facility. MDHHS intends to use the shared data to administer the Michigan. Four D Child Support Program as allowed by the U.S. Social Security Act. Michigan statute requires a local units of government that operates a jail to provide the designated agency with the data necessary to identify payers who are or will be incarcerated for a hundred and eighty days or more. Seven K, resolution to designate American Rescue Plan Act funds. This resolution is sponsored by the community, is sponsored by the Committee of the Whole. On March eleventh, twenty twenty-one, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law and established the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program. On January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty dash zero six. To determine that funding from the ARPA grant award shall be classified as allowance for revenue loss as defined by ARPA. Following review and discussion at a special committee of the whole meeting held on March eleventh, twenty twenty-two. The board determined four projects should be funded through ARPA, including the Annex Building Repairs, County Vehicle Global Positioning System. Purchase of a fleet vehicle for primary use of the Equalization Department and Planning slash zoning department, and purchase of an animal control vehicle. The proposed resolution directs department heads responsible for designated projects to secure the necessary proposals in quotes for presentation and final approval by the Board of Commissioners in a manner consistent with the purchasing procedure policy. Item seven L, resolution to approve surveyor servants, surveyor services agreements for remonumentation program. This resolution is sponsored by the Equalization Director. The State Survey and Remonumentation Act requires each county to prepare a county monumentation and remonumentation plan. It is the recommendation of the Equalization Director acting as, acting in his capacity as remonumentation, geez, that word is rough. Remonumentation Grant Administrator to authorize contracts with J. Card Surveying LLC and Lapum and Associates for services. As Monumentation Surveyors for twenty twenty-two. If approved, this resol, this proposed resolution authorizes a contract at a total not to exceed eighteen thousand sixty-two dollars for each agreement. Item seven M, resolution to approve county rep, represent, oh geez. Resolution to approve county represent. Go ahead.
County Representative Independent Contractor Agreement.
For remonumentation program. This resolution, I'm almost done. This resolution is sponsored by the Equalization Director. The State Survey and Remonumentation Act requires each county to prepare a county monumentation and remonumentation plan. It is the recommendation of the Equalization, Equalization Director acting in his capacity as remonumentation Grant Administrator to authorize a contract with Tim Lapum for services at county representation. Of twenty twenty-two. If approved, the proposed resolution authorizes a contract at a total not to exceed seven thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars. Item seven N, resolution to approve peer review committee agreements for remonumentation program. This resolution is sponsored by the Equalization Director. The State Survey and Remonumentation Act requires each county to prepare a county monumentation and remonumentation plan. It is the recommendation of the Equalization Director acting in his capacity as remonumentation Grant Administrator to authorize contracts with Larry Kavanaugh. Kavanaugh, P.S. and Robinson Consulting Services LLC for services as peer review committee members for twenty twenty-two. If approved, their proposed resolution authorizes a contract at a total not to exceed six hundred dollars for each agreement. Is there any discussion on those?
Wow, I don't know that I want to.
I always make a. Make a motion to the resolutions to be adapted as presented.
I think we already made that.
We did.
Yeah, that was back a ways.
Well, you know, it's very difficult for people to follow. We want.
We just, I thought we just.
No, he did.
Yeah, Commissioner Scott did with support from Commissioner Vaughn, and I think people need to know what we're voting on.
Oh, I agree.
So I know that was a multiple, but.
That was about ten minutes ago.
Any other discussion?
Off the road.
Uh, Mr., Mr., Randy, Mr. Booth is here. You weren't at the Committee of the Whole. Did you have anything to add to, to this? There's nothing new is what we were told of the Committee of the Whole.
Bring mom.
To these resolutions? Yes. Cause there's three on here that are correct, related to your department, you directly.
Yeah, I, I provided the three contracts here that are signed. The peer review members, I mailed their contracts to them. When I get those back, if the chair can sign those when I receive them back from the peer review members, they, uh, they don't meet until November or December, so we have plenty of time.
Okay. Anything else? Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrot.
Yes.
So we have item seven B, resolution to approve zoning text amendment number zero one dash two-two. This resolution is sponsored by the Planning and Zoning Administrator. A motion to remove this matter from the table is necessary before discussion can begin.
I'll make a motion to remove it from the table.
I'll support that. And a motion from Commissioner Scott with support to remove the resolution for approving the zoning text amendment zero one dash two-two. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrot.
No.
Ron Vaughn.
No.
So we got two and two.
He's on the table.
We keep it on the.
He's on.
Sure, yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
So.
Don't go away, it just stays on the table.
Okay.
All right.
So we got, uh, where are my claims, right?
Oh.
Did we cover it off? Mr. Commissioner Scott, I am not going to. Come into that.
Oh.
Claims. We have claims of one hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Who reviewed claims?
Myself and Commissioner Vaughn.
Yeah.
So can you guys give us a brief? Lot of childcare on there.
I can start appropriations. Uh, there was a lot of legal insurance and also I read my own. I remember what the other part was. Um, go on down the list, uh, correctional training. Um, they do it in-house training on the computers that pays for that. I think that was a little over four thousand dollars.
Four thousand one hundred and one dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Okay. Uh, courthouse and grounds was for plowing mostly. See.
And the workman's comp on there too is seven thousand, so it's a fee.
Equalization, um, part of that was assessment, uh, notices. Housing went to builders. Energy council, early high, um, lawyers, of course. Jail, part of that was, um. The medical. And, uh. Remember what else Mark put on that.
Rest of it was just standard. It was just that, and that's just the monthly fee on the medical contract.
Right, right. Road patrol village, uh, eleven-five roughly went to, uh, car repair. That was an accident that was had.
December. Last year.
Treasurer's office was, uh, thought it team.
The only other thing that I was just the, the childcare, of course, there were, um, for detention costs. Isabel County, Midland County, and the partners in charge was a contracted counseling service.
Partners in change?
Yes.
And they're still utilizing bridges as well, I see too, huh? I can see a cost on there for them.
And I think appropriations, there was one to Morse Clerk for which is for bedrooms that.
Yeah, part of that was from Sentinel. I think that's, uh, Tom's. Or, uh. We're gonna use technical. IT stuff? I T stuff, yeah.
Anything else? Any? Mr. Serbrot, anything?
Make a motion.
That, that collision, aren't we covered with insurance?
But it's, it's an in and out. Oh, it's gonna come in and under revenues, insurance refunds.
All right.
And then goes out.
We got.
Minus the deductible, so.
Okay.
Yeah, all what you're seeing is what you're putting, how, not what you're getting in.
Right, the revenue side is.
All right. As long as we'll get.
I support. Thank you.
We have a motion with support to accept to pay the bills of one hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrot.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Resolution carries item eight, unfinished business. I don't believe they're finny.
We tabled it.
Pardon me?
We tabled it.
Item nine, Administrator's Report.
A couple of things I want to just briefly report on the MAC conference that I attended earlier this week. Couple of, uh, I think important things for us to keep our eye on. The, the first one concerns the broadband money. That will soon be released to the states and then ultimately to the local municipalities. There is an organization called, uh, Connect Nation, I think is what they're called, that's doing a survey right now on behalf of the state. To document all of the broadband infrastructure across the state. They're literally gonna drive about sixty-five thousand road miles to determine what. We have in place in the ground in terms of fiber optics and everything else in the capacity. So that when the federal government is prepared to release the money to the states, Michigan will be very well positioned to say, this is what we have. This is what you say we need to the federal level. Uh, please give us the money and will be prepared then to accept that money, which will then be granted to counties, uh, cities, villages, townships across the state to build this broadband infrastructure. Uh, it will be prioritized with, uh, three different, uh, priority levels ranging from areas that are already, uh, fairly well-served all the way to areas that are completely underserved. One of the things they're gonna do with this that I think makes it pretty unique is they're not gonna go just by census block to figure out where people are, but they're actually gonna take address information. From the counties and map it and determine where those higher priority areas are. This is an opportunity for me now to plug the GIS project that Randy's put forward with ARPA, because if we were able to marry the. Street address guide that nine-one-one has to our GIS, we're good. We'll have that data. And we'll likely go closer to the top of the list for some of that funding. Uh, it's a pretty exciting project. They're gonna do a webinar next week that I'll sit in on to, uh, just get the timing down, so I'll know what to watch for in terms of grant applications and get all that in in time. Just capitalize on that as much as we can, so that, that was pretty exciting. Also on ARPA, they had a representative from National Association of Counties, uh, do a presentation about how some of the ARPA monies were being, uh, used. And I just wanted to follow up on a comment I made at our last meeting about, about their terming the clawback. And that means there was discussion at the federal level about taking back some of the ARPA monies that were awarded last year. We were assured that none of the local governments will be affected by the clawback. They're primarily looking at the states that have deliberately not spent any of the money. And saying to the states, if you're not gonna spend that, we'll take it back and redistribute it to other areas like broadband. Uh, so our funding, they say, is still secure. I say we don't commit the second. Two million dollars that we're getting until it arrives in our account, hopefully next, well, in May, so about six weeks from now. Um, but it's, um, at least they're, they're keeping an eye on that for us at the national level. And again, they said we should be fine. So that was good news. Another session I attended was one on court funding. There is, uh, case coming out of Elkena County. The People versus Johnson, I think is what they called it. In this case, uh, this was out of a circuit court decision where the court assessed fees, uh, along with, uh, sentencing for, for Mr. Johnson. And the, the attorneys are challenging the court's constitutional ability to assess fees, uh, to, uh, people that, that have been convicted of crimes. This is one to keep a very close eye on. It appears the Supreme Court will hear the argument in June. The people in Lansing seem to think the court is leaning to siding with Johnson and saying those fees are unconstitutional. If that's the case, we're gonna have a huge hole in our budget in terms of the fees that are assessed by the courts. I totally understand the rationale. They don't want the appearance of judges imposing fees to simply pad their budgets. Even though judges don't typically do that, the appearance is there. And so a few of the justices have, uh, been on record saying that they're leaning more toward, uh, that unconstitutional, uh, argument. So one to watch. Now, this is coupled, uh, to another issue that will be faced in October. Our current system for collecting fees at all levels of the courts, uh, was extended only till October of twenty-two, and you might remember from a few years ago or not. Something called the Cunningham case, a very similar type of a case. And in that case, the court ruled that, uh, state needed to come up with a new funding mechanism for some of the fees at the district court level. Legislature said we, we can't get to it that quickly. They postponed it, uh, until October of twenty, but in October of twenty, we were in the midst of COVID, so they didn't really get around to dealing with it. So they sunsetted it October of twenty twenty-two. It does not appear at this point that it's gonna get extended again, so, uh, another area to watch in terms of court funding. Now, on the good news side of that particular session, uh, there is a movement to completely overhaul the way courts are funded in Michigan. And to fund them truly as a state court, so that the state would fund the courts, which I think would be, uh, you know, tremendous relief to the county. You know, trying to meet with all the state requirements for the fundings of the court following these cases and so on. The bad news to this, though, is that, uh, the states that have done this over the years, it takes about ten years to fully implement. So if we got on that like today, it's gonna be ten years from now before we have a new funding system fully in place, but you gotta start sometime. So no, it's as good as any. There was, uh, a commission that was formed, um, a couple of years ago that looked at the state court funding and has recommended. I just wanna say about a thirty-page report that they issued recommended a path to getting this done. So it does appear that there's some momentum in Lansing to address this, so something, uh, again, to keep an eye on, but, uh, particularly, we need to follow those other two. That one court case and then the other, uh, statute extension. If either of those, uh, goes in a negative way, we will be impacted probably in the twenty twenty-three budget cycle on having to deal with that. And the last item on MAC, I did, uh, have an opportunity, I won't say corner, but to discuss, uh, with the MAC president, uh, his, um, open invitation to come to Ogumah County. Uh, they are actually working on that, so probably spring to early summer in that timeframe, we'll get, uh, Steve Curry up here, uh, at a public committee, the whole meeting. And just talk about MAC, talk about the benefits of being a part of MAC, what they do for us, uh, in Lansing. And, uh, he, he definitely was anxious to get up here. He wants to visit, uh, all the counties, I think, on a two-year cycle, so that's his goal. Every two years to have visited every county, so we're on the list anyway.
Well, he's been here before, yeah. So when we weren't a member.
Was it him?
Oh, yeah, Steve Curry, yeah. Oh, absolutely. The last thing.
Only Tony not involved.
Yeah, it was a sales pitch then.
Very motivated.
I remember that.
Last thing I want to give you an update on is that overtime, that's the automated payroll system. Uh, we remain on schedule in just, uh, three phases right now. The county building steelworkers group and non-union employees and transit. Uh, we are using the system now. It will actually be live, not. This payroll cycle, but I believe the next one. It's live, it's, it's active at that point. Uh, so that's, that's really good news. We're still working out some minor things and we're, uh, it, it's kind of heartening to see what we are working on. It's, it's really fine-tuning. The bulk of what we need for this group of employees is in the system. It's kind of heartening to see what we are working on. It's it's really fine tuning. The bulk of what we need for this group of employees is in the system. A number of us have been kind of playing with it here over the last week. I discovered some things that I can actually do from my phone, like approving time off requests. First one I had was just sort of a test one, but I've had two employees submit them for real, so they're in the system there, you know, for future days in the system. So it's pretty exciting. After this group. You know, live and permanent, the sheriff and jail group is next. And by May fifteenth, they should be fully operational. That's a huge one. That one has more nuances than any other group that we have with. You know, things like a shift differential and how we calculate the overtime and everything else. And then finally, the court group that's upstairs. May sixteenth at the earliest, June twelfth at the latest, we will have them on, and that will be everybody that will have on the system. At that point, and then we'll start really having some fun with. Some of the other modules in here like signing on that you viewed the harassment policy and just a lot of other things that we. Have not had available to us in the past, so very exciting. Again, by early summer, everybody will be. Really looking forward to that, particularly a relief in the clerk's office, I think will be helped felt immediately, so.
That it?
That's it.
Clerk.
All right, couple things. Brett Gildner, Oghama County Clerk. Today, we had a visitor in our office, Isla Smith, the one who came from. The kids day. She came and wanted to come back, so she came and worked with us for a couple hours today.
Your kid.
She shadowed us, yes. Yep. The postage machine is getting put in tomorrow. So there'd be a little bit of downtime in postage machine, but. Should be fairly quick getting trained and all that, so that'll be all taken care of wrapped up tomorrow. And then just a couple reminders about the election stuff. Commissioners and the township officials that need to that were appointed that need to run this year, the deadline to file is April nineteenth. And school board. Whitmore Prescott has three seats open and West Branch has two seats open. July twenty sixth is the deadline for that. Currently, all of the absentee ballots are going out for the May third election right now. So we're moving along with that and Monday, our part timer starts. And then the following Monday, the full time position starts.
Can you announce the names of them? I think I seen the phones.
Yep, yep, the part time position is J C Lucas. The full time position is Nicole Cooper. So we're excited to. Move forward.
Is that it?
Yep.
Treasurer?
Our office is continuing to work on the liquid tax settlement and right now our preliminary numbers are showing that taxes are down by twelve thousand five hundred and forty six dollars compared to last year. Sometimes chips are up, sometimes chips are down, but preliminary numbers are showing that we're still down compared to last year. We did our dog gift basket drawing this week and the winner is Kathy Newbecker. We have a picture of that on the county website as well as my personal Facebook page. Sadly, it did not improve my dog sales as I was hoping it would. Was still fun, though. The customers were very excited that their name was in a drawing, so it was still fun and a positive experience for our customers, but it did not improve our sales. Maybe next year.
Thank you. Thank you. Other elected officials in the department had reports. Mr. Booth.
Randy Booth, Equalization Director, and. At this point, about half the units are in after border review. We're balancing with them and we're waiting the other units to. Submit their roles and everything after border review so that we can prepare the equalization report for April twelfth, I believe it is.
Tuesday.
Yes. You are you aware of who goes to tribunal and who doesn't?
I normally get a notification of the tribunal cases.
Is that the treasurer's office or is that you? If somebody goes to tax tribunal.
The state of Michigan notifies us.
Okay, both of you guys?
Yes, normally.
Okay. And when's that usually happen?
Uh, they have to wait for their petitions back from border review, so they start filing normally in April and May.
Okay.
Tribunals.
I'd be curious to know. How many or any large ones, because you let us know about.
I have.
They one last year.
Bring your attention to the big ones, absolutely.
Elected official department heads in the in the room. Are you going to give an update? No?
Cool.
I asked. I'm on the phone. Mr. Sign, do you have an update?
Yes, Randy Booth asked me to look for a vehicle for him. On for the two that I found, and I did get a hold of Arnold Ford, and they do have another one that they could reserve for yous. I did email Tim the bid for it. Come at thirty thousand nine thirteen and nine fifteen, I think it was. So same price as the other two that we picked out. Then we're also real busy at the department. There's a lot of stuff coming in right now, a lot of commercial stuff going on.
Good.
So. Other than that, I'm, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jeff, do you have anything from veterans?
No, I I don't have anything other than I'll probably be bringing you. The new. Well, the old. Backing committee member for Larry Boyce at the first meeting in April.
Okay. And MSU.
Good evening. I have a few things to share. I attended the fair board meeting March third and was able to share information about clubs and I was also able to share information about the March ninth. Session that MSU Extension partnered with the Oghama County Economic Development Corporation to offer about. The American Rescue Plan Act for local officials in Oghama County. We had a number of people who showed up who were representing. Townships in the county who had a chance to ask questions and learn along with us. At either the morning or the evening session and really glad that. We were able to offer that and we'll look for more opportunities to partner with the E D C to do things like that. In four H, we have livestock clubs meeting. And some have already started their weigh-ins for animals for fair, so that's an exciting time. And we have a really interesting special interest club about reptiles. They had their first meeting on March ninth and a good turnout. We didn't have reptiles in the building, but we did have kids learning about turtles, frogs and snakes and other things that. Of interest. I did not attend. But in our nutrition department, Elaine Palm, who is our. Community nutrition instructor has been doing a series of classes at Oghama Heights High School. She's she has been joining their class remotely to talk about our peak health and performance curriculum. Which is nutrition education for middle or high school, in this case, students. And athletes to help them better improve their health and athletic performance through a focus on nutrition. And we're delighted to be able to offer that and looking ahead. April is really a time when we think about financial education. We have a couple of things happening at Whitmore Prescott. We have a program in the high school called Reality Check where kids are going to learn about. Careers and income and expenses. Through, you know, basically creating a budget for themselves through a fun activity. And then we also have an online series of classes for youth statewide called Adulting one O one. Which we have four sessions that are happening on Thursday evenings in April. So there'll be a session on paying for post-secondary education. Which could be a career or certificate program or college. Helping kids understand, you know, what it means to take out a loan or, you know, to get scholarships for those activities. There'll be a session on communicating through conflict. A session on understanding credit and why it matters. And a session on building a resume and marketing yourself to get a job. And we're really glad to be able to offer those classes. And then Phil Durst, who is our. Agriculture educator who works with beef and dairy industry. Has a really busy calendar and he's been working on continuing to work on projects around antibiotic stewardship, helping people understand. When to use antibiotics to to best effect and not just all the time. And research and education to reduce bovine leukemia virus, which can be really problematic for herds. He spoke to the four H Utter Club about some of the work that he does and helped them understand. Some of the things that he's doing. And then he's delivered sessions on beef quality assurance to producers to help them. To make sure that they're getting the best quality from their animal. And in addition to all the other work that he does to support the dairy industry, like attending the Great Lakes Regional Dairy Conference. And he has an upcoming educational session to help producers understand how to add value by creating artisan cheeses. So we're very busy in extension and thank you for the time to share all of our updates.
Thank you. Any other elected officials or department heads on the phone? Item eleven, manors on the floor. Any commissioners?
Can we ask a question to?
Do what?
Tim.
Sure.
On parliamentarian. Rules. In order to talk about the tax amendments that we left on the. Table, are we able to? Take them off the table in the committee's whole meeting to the least.
Well, you can talk about it there. You're not. You're not voting on anything.
That's fine.
Safe to talk about it.
He'll be able to. Put it on the agenda and talk about it.
Sure.
Okay. That's fine.
That's an excellent question, Mr. Scott.
Well, thank you.
Any other, any other matters on the floor? So you're going to put that in committee of the whole for the zoning?
Sure. First item.
Item twelve motions for adoption. None. Item thirteen committee reports, Commissioner Scott.
Since the last meeting, let's see, I attended. Edwards Township, they talked about salaries for board members and committees. Riding their roads. They're also looking at spending some ARPA money toward a generator for their. Hall. And they had a. A company there talking about it. Porton Township went over their annual budget. They also talked about writing. Foster Township had a review of their annual budget also. They are on a different schedule for budgets, you know. Bossers going ahead and buying a laptop computer for their treasurer. They also talked about board salaries and branding in the roads. The road commission, they opened up their bid bids for twenty twenty two material and service bids. They went over their winter budget that at that time they were a hundred and six. Well, a hundred and seven percent over budget for primary and local roads. It's not surprising. In their case, they have to set a budget, of course. They're just over budget. April eighteenth, they'll be going to a four day schedule. The airport, we also went over the twenty twenty three budget. It's not that it does go into effect in October, the same as ours, but the FAA, the federal. Want a bunch of review done beforehand and a report long ahead of time, so. We went over that. We're going to buy two radios for the trucks. They're out crawling snow or out on the runway. Radios that can communicate with airplanes. Just in case you're out there following snow and somebody wants to land. Get the heck out of the way, you know. Other than that, they don't, they don't know somebody could be, you know. So that's the townships that I've been to and the and the meetings I've been to since since reports of the last.
What did you say it's going to for? I'm sorry, I I didn't hear it was going to a four day work week soon?
A road commission. In the summer, they go down to four tenths.
And that's April?
April eighteenth, they're going to four tenths.
Was there many individuals at that meeting complaining about the current condition of the roads or no?
No, not at all. They have a very matter of fact, there was a gentleman that was on the agenda and he did not show up.
Just because of all the water is what I'm having.
No, they they have very little attendance there. They have one gentleman that used to work for another road commission that's retired, becomes every meeting and then. Right now, I'm able to attend just about all their meetings because they're they're every other week. Now, because of the five Tuesdays this month. They'll probably change back and it conflicts with my parks and rec meeting. So I'm only able to attend one meeting. I put farts and wreck ahead of that because they have two meetings a month. But, yeah.
Commissioner Sibber.
I attended Clackey Township. They entered into a contract with them through the access to utilize all of their ARPA funding for broadband. They had it all drawn up. They had a special meeting. They figured out where they're going to lay the lines. I'm not exactly sure when that's going to start, but probably soon as the weather breaks, we may start laying down fiber optic. I attended EMS, a whole lot with EMS. West Branch City, we had a presentation from West Branch City Schools in regards to the upcoming. Vote in regards to. A bonding issue. Their proposal is that it's not going to, because the current one runs out. The new one would. For them not increase what anybody's paying right now, it will continue to be the same one point six seven mils, I believe it is, something like that for twenty five years. They should see improvement plan, most of it's going to be at Oghama Heights. It's out, they've got it. On the website and stuff, so. Going to do a little bit of Sir Line around the gymnasium area is their proposal. And then also West Branch City. The veterans, a couple of veterans were there in regards to donation of the old M S P posts, the city actually has title to the property now. And so the veterans would pitch in their. Idea of being able to utilize that and have all three of the. Members of the Veterans Alliance in that building and they would rotate, so it would be somebody in there at least three days a week. We'd like to see if that happens, if. Oghama County Veterans Office could go in there as well, so there'd be basically one stop shop. If Jeff and his group couldn't help somebody, maybe they could refer them to the V F W or the American Legion or the D A V. So, you know, say, no, you know, you need, we can't help you out, but maybe they can. So it'd be a one stop shop.
Where's that at?
Go west, State Police Post.
Okay.
So the city hasn't made a decision on it, like I said, they just pitched it.
That's great.
I think it'd be a great idea, and I know a couple of our commissioners, we've. Discussed it with the veterans and I think we're in support of it, so. If the city decides to do it, I think it'd be a great thing. You know, so. But that's it.
Mr. Vaughn?
None. I've had no meetings in the last couple of weeks.
Lucky you.
My meetings all start next week, so.
I all I had was the E D C. My Michigan works this tomorrow morning, so. E D C meeting, they talked about the revolving loan fund. They talked about the meeting that MSU. Hosted related to the ARPA funds for the. Local townships. And I told them that we had placed childcare on our list. If they had any ideas as far as a plan. To present that to us and I would pass it on, but it's definitely on our list and kind of at a standstill right now, but that was briefly discussed as well, so. Same as you, Mr. Vaughn, mine will start again next week. So item fourteen, general public comment. Same rules apply. This is for any subject matters. State your name for the record, speak only to the chairperson when speaking, stand behind the podium when speaking, limit comments to three minutes or fewer, and follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Is there any public comment in the room? Hi.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mary Bebe. For those of you who don't know me, I'm currently the prosecutor for Ross Common County. I've been doing that since two thousand and sixteen. I've been in the prosecutor's office since two thousand and twelve. I just mainly come in to introduce myself, so for some of you who have heard my name and just wanted to face to it. this is who I am. I do plan on running for the eighty-second district court judge position for Oghamah and Roscommon County. As most of you know, since Judge Noble retired, the statute requires Governor Whitmer to appoint a judge. She has done that. But thankfully, it's a temporary position that has to be refilled in November by election because the people should have that choice. And I'm hoping to be the people's choice, so good evening.
Thank you. Nice meeting you. Any other public comment in the room? Come on, sir. No public comment?
I will.
Come on.
Dan Dombzowski, I'm the vice chairman on the planning commission. There was some question I wanted to bring up about the, you guys had Ryan Bead up here in regards to the setbacks in the front yards and some of these tax amendments we're proposing. So first of all, our zoning book goes back to July ninety-seven. And if I may read this, it's the basis determining front yard requirements. The required front yard shall be measured from the right-of-way line to an imaginary line across the width of the lot, which represents a minimum required front setback distance for that district. Where existing setback line has been established by buildings occupied fifty percent of more of the frontage within the same block or were unplanted within two hundred feet of the proposed building, such established setbacks shall apply. In the instance where lots abut the shoreline, the above reference existing setbacks shall apply to both front and rear yard. As far as the lake lots, the front yard, a lake lot, the minimum front yard setback in this district shall be twenty-five feet. In the case of waterfront lots, minimum front yard setback shall be fifty feet. Yard abutting in the water shall be considered the front yard. So I know there was some question brought up about as far as recreational vehicles, motorboats and such. I think there was some discussion about adding the terminology, if we're going to put all these factors in there, because we were specifically talking about RVs. And it was brought up about boats and a few other items. But these rules, nothing's changed. I mean, it's been here since ninety-seven. So, I mean, all we were looking to do was amend the date on the cameras, for example, to have a date in there.
It seems to me that a lot of people were not aware or familiar with it. And now, since it's a topic of discussion, people are looking into it, even though we've said numerous times that this hasn't changed.
Right.
But that seems to be what I'm hearing.
Yeah, that's exactly right, and that's where a lot of people attend a meeting. You know, a lot of rebuttals. I've been coming here for twenty-two years. Well, it's been the same.
I think it's good that people are educating themselves, but, but yes, I, I, so we're going to put that on the committee of the whole and continue to discuss. Now, what happens if, if if this does, if this stays on the table, doesn't get approved, so we just continue with the previous existing, correct?
Right.
There's just no updates to it.
There's just no change.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to let you know.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone? No public comment on the phone? Item fifteen is closed session.
Move, I'll move to enter into a closed session, confer with the county attorney about the legal opinion. Legal opinion exempt from exposure by state statute as minute the Open Meetings Act, MCL, point two six eight H.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Surratt to move it to closed session. There will be no, no further business after we come out of closed session, just so that you all are aware. There wouldn't be no further business discussed, so. Any discussion on that going into closed session? Can we get a roll call vote?
Mark Surratt?
Yes.
Brown Vaughn?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Craig Scott?
Yes.
You're going to make a motion to go into closed session at six twenty-four. Apparently a quick break. Don't leave.
There you go. Motion to come in the open session, back into public session.
We have a motion from Commissioner Surratt with support from Commissioner Vaughn to come back into public session at seven oh eight. Can we get a roll call vote on that?
We can. Craig Scott?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Brown Vaughn?
Yes.
Mark Surratt?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
When?
Amen.
We have a motion with support to adjourn at seven oh eight. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion adjourned at seven oh eight PM.
Oh, no, I went to go start drinking.